The CIP workshop, July 13th. Mr. Rabby, you want to go ahead and kick off?
I think Mr. Van Gompoel's got something he wants to lead off with tonight.
Go ahead, Russ.
Yeah, okay. What I want to do, first of all, is I think I've received a question about, at the last workshop, we talked about $20 million in new debt for 2022, and what the impact would be on the tax rate. So if we can continue to circulate those around, there's multiple copies.
One pass.
I think one pass. So this is just basically looking at the assessed value. It gives a little historical trend. And brings us up to 2021, and then the equalized value without the tax increment districts. So it'd be how the debt service levy would be spread across our value. Just for comparison purposes, there's a column that shows the assessed equalized ratio. And then the next column is just the total debt that's supported by tax levy. So that's a tax levy portion of our debt. And then what is the projected tax rate just for debt service? So if you were to follow across in 2021, you'd see that the tax rate for debt service purposes is $2.91. What we talked about at the last workshop is the fact that assessed equalized ratio is going down because the equalized value is increasing. And it's still an estimate at this point in time. But we're estimating that that percentage could be about 83%. Right now, it's 88%. So that's an estimate number. With that in mind, the city probably want to consider in its 2022 operating budget, the start of a reevaluation. And so I just did for assumption purposes that we would not have a reevaluation come into play until the 2025 assessed value ratio. So in 2025, the assessed value would come closer to the equalized value, and you can see what that does to the corresponding tax rates. And I think that was a question that I received after the first workshop. So I know, went through a bunch of numbers really quick, but the question was, what does this mean to our tax rate? I gave you a historical perspective and a little forward-looking perspective.
Well, thanks for putting that together.
Russ, I got a question. How does our projected tax rate for debt compare to other communities our size?
I don't have that, but what I do have for you this evening, and what I have is the debt ratio from the state of Wisconsin. And the last data that's available is based on the 2019 value. So I have what the debt ratio is. So that would be how much debt is to the state maximum. And this has comparable communities. So if you again want to take one, pass along, it's the communities other than Oshkosh are in alphabetical order. And you can see it's a wide variety from, you know, Appleton and Fond du Lac being on the low end, to Whitewater and Oshkosh being on the upper end. But again, this is based on 2019 values. So to answer your question, Councilmember Miller, this is the debt ratios for the other communities, but again, it's based on 2019 values.
And ours obviously improved to a projected 50.32%. So if that happens, then we're going to be sort of in the mix. Not exactly in the middle, but more towards the middle, depending on what happens with those other communities. So obviously, you know, compared to Appleton and Fond du Lac, they're two of the leaders in this group in a good way. We're on the high end, but our improvement has gotten us to a point where we're projecting to stay in the low 50s and high 40s throughout the decade.
So those are some of the questions that I thought I had received since the last workshop. Since the last workshop, we also, we talked a little bit about the 10-year CIP projects, especially from Public Works. When we printed out the booklets and gave you the booklets, we only had five years' worth. I do have a printout of projects by department and projects by funding source for the full 10 years. If you're interested, and I can pass that around real quick. And with that, I think we're going to spend most of our time tonight talking about specific projects. So I don't know if you wanted me to do this now or do that later.
I think if you could maybe send that around now, Russ, that I think will really help our discussion going forward.
The first one is by department. So this is the 10 years, so it goes out five more years. And it's based by department. And the next one I'll be sending around is by funding source. So again, just like the five-year one where we broke it into utility, revenue, operations, debt service, trade-in, excuse me, levy, special assessments, and then debt. So I'm not sure what you wanted to use as a starting point, but I wanted to get those out because when we adopt the plan, the plan will be for a 10-year period for Public Works. The other departments will be five-year period, but this will be included as a supplement schedule in the plan.
And if you remember from our conversation late in June, one of the primary reasons for me pushing my staff to really get that 10-year forecast completed, we've been doing utility forecasting for 10 years to help elders with the rate analysis structure. But right now, you know, we're coming up on applications being due for another round of Wisconsin Department of Transportation block grant, the STP urban funding. And, you know, applications are due here within the next couple of months for projects that would likely be constructed in 2027 or 2028. So, you know, historically, we had piled all these outer projects in year five of our CIP because one of the requirements of the STP program is, you know, the project's got to be in your long-range capital plan. So we piled them all in year five historically. Now that we've got a software system that is capable of longer-range forecasting, we've started being a little more realistic in how we're programming them into the software. And then we can include this 10-year projection in with the plan that gets approved so that when I submit those applications to the DOT, yep, you know, here's a project for, you know, 2026 or 2027 construction. Here it is in my long-range capital improvement program plan so that we can continue to move that forward. Because realistically, a project, you know, if the DOT is going to build a project, the planning and the budgeting for it starts five to 10 years before the actual construction. You know, as you may have noticed in the newsletter last week, you know, the DOT met with the city manager and myself in late June to start talking about the Jackson Oregon Street project again. It's scheduled for 2028 construction, but they're starting the planning process again for it now. So that's how far in advance these projects that have federal funding tied to them really have to move. You know, we've heard a lot of talk in the media about, you know, a federal infrastructure bill to be coming forward. I expect some of those same requirements that in order to submit an application, you need to have a project in your long-range capital plan. So therefore, I felt it was very important for us to get that 10-year look in the plan. And it also gives you an indication of, you know, as you get calls from residents, hey, when is my street going to get done? Well, now it's not just a five-year look anymore. You can see, all right, yeah, you know, we really are looking at it, but we got to get some things done before we can get to it. And, you know, well, we didn't bring the big color-coded maps up that we have down in engineering, but, you know, we've got a lot of various colors on maps that kind of highlight where we're headed for the next 10-plus years even. So, you know, it's trying to give you a little bit more of that information and help us should funding opportunities come available.
So just a quick caveat to the handout you have for the 10-year projects are just Public Works projects. So if you're looking at the total pages, it's different than the total page that you got last. For 2022, it's different. Because this is just Public Works projects for 10 years, not the entire CIP.
So, I mean, with the limited time that we've, you know, allocated to this, you know, I think James can talk pretty well about projects that have been included in the 2022 capital improvement plan. The advantage of seeing the 10-year is that there are a lot of excellent candidates. And it's not to oversimplify it, but it does come down to an issue of how much borrowing you're tolerant of because we have easily have the needs to fill all these projects. And I know when a couple of projects were mentioned, I think some council members were genuinely pleased to know that, oh, well, this project isn't the plan. We can move projects up and down the plan in the 10 years. Generally, James and his staff want some logic to connect certain projects grouped together for just connectivity purposes, whether it's utilities or something like that. For example, with Algoma, we're doing, which one are we doing with that? Is that the Vine?
Vine Avenue is tied to Algoma.
Yeah, and that's just because they're connected. And so as you go down a couple of years, McKinley and I think Cherry were grouped together.
Right.
So there's always a logic that the staff goes through to put those together. But aside from that, I mean, you can take groupings and say, well, maybe this grouping would be better earlier than rest. It would be very difficult for us to argue with you and say, no, that's not correct. They're all needed, so just move them in groups rather than just individual projects.
So a question then on that. So if the priority is based on the Pacer rating, is what we're seeing with, for example, Algoma and Wisconsin, Wisconsin being later, Algoma being put up sooner, I mean, is the Pacer rating worse on Algoma than what you experienced going down Wisconsin?
The priority from a street reconstruction standpoint is not solely based upon the Pacer rating. It's based on a combination of the Pacer rating, utility, all three utilities, stormwater and sanitary, age, condition, failure rates, and budget, and how we need to fit puzzle pieces together. For example, CP Avenue that's being constructed right now, you know, it probably needed it more than Lake and Bayshore. But from a utility service standpoint, we had to come from Bowen Street up Bayshore, up Lake to get to CP, to get to Rosalia, to be able to tie all those pieces together. So quite often, you know, we'll look at, okay, this street needs to be done, but oftentimes, there are four or five projects that need to maybe get done before we can get to that street in order to make sure that the utilities work correctly. So it, you know, I mentioned the big color-coded map because, you know, one color would be Pacer rating, one color would be water main age and break history, one color would be sanitary sewer age, one color would be storm sewer age. So it's taking all of those variables and trying to bring them together. Yes, the Pacer rating and the street condition, that's the one we all see when we drive down the road and we feel when we go down the road. But sometimes, it's the utilities underneath that we got to get to first before we can get to those other streets.
And Rosalia is probably as good example as any. It's about the water there because it's the connectivity for the entire water system.
It is. The 16-inch water main that we're going to be putting into Rosalia is a huge component of our asset management plan for connecting a secondary outlet out of the water filtration plant and getting it to the water main crossing at South Main Street to be able to feed the south side of the city. So it's one of those big puzzle pieces of, all right, we're looking at potential critical failure issues. And, you know, you've been on a lot more of the asset management planning discussions than I have, but it's where is the potential for a critical failure? And really, that primary, you know, a single primary outlet out of the water filtration plant is a huge critical failure point. So we need to get that secondary system, which is why Rosalia is in the plan for next year.
And Rosalia does, I mean, for those of you who may not be familiar, Rosalia is a fairly...
It's rated, I think, about a four or five. It's a collector, actually.
But you wouldn't know it to be, to know that. The typical residential street, if Rosalia was anywhere else in town, probably be, what, a six-inch main, maybe eight?
It'd be an eight. We wouldn't put a six-inch in anymore.
Eight?
Yeah, we'd put an eight-inch minimum in.
So 16 inches, that's even greater.
Four times as big of area. But it is, it's to connect to that Main Street river crossing. And then, you know, in the future years, as we look at reconstructing South Main Street, again, it's, you know, not only the street condition, the sewer condition, the storm condition, but it's also extending that large transmission main to be able to provide more reliable service on that part of the city.
And that's really part of what I'm trying to play. Rosalia is the last link in that water main. As we've been doing all those streets on the south side, we've looked ahead, managed to get that main put down Otter, jogged on Bowen to get over to, I forget which street we ran it on, was it?
I think it's Otter, Bowen, CP, Rosalia is where it goes.
I think it is. So we've worked it that way. Now, Rosalia is kind of that last missing link to complete that that secondary outfall to the south side of the city to really give us the redundancy. So we're not relying on an 1896 water main to be the primary backup anymore. So that's where we're currently sitting.
1896? That's not that old.
A lot of those water mains were still wood at the time.
Oh, man.
So that's a lot of, you know, I know it's real easy to look at a street surface and say, well, this street doesn't need it, but that one does. But, you know, unfortunately, it's that 3D jigsaw puzzle that we're trying to fit together always to make sure that we're not having failures somewhere else because of it.
And James and Steve, for the people at home, they probably don't remember this, but there was a time when we would repave streets and not fix the infrastructure underneath. So a lot of these streets look good, but what's underneath is pure garbage. Is that accurate?
Sixth Avenue from a handful of years ago is a prime example. That street was repaved, let's see, that was Steve Dittmer's first design job. So in 1980, that street was repaved, but the utilities underneath it were not done. The utilities were crumbling and failing, so we had to go in and redo the street again because we had to fix all the utilities. So yes, for a long period of time, that was the philosophy of, well, let's just fix the street and we're not going to worry about the utilities. Well, five years later, because of all the water and sewer breaks, the street is shot again because we've been digging it up to fix the stuff that wasn't fixed when the project was done. So that's been a philosophical change within the organization. So when we're doing a project, you know, we're televising, we're inspecting, and we're either replacing, lining, or doing something with all of the utilities to make sure that their life cycle matches more closely with the street surface life cycle.
One other philosophical change that's kind of implemented since about 2008 was actually really the engineering division trying to plan this out versus going from the request scenario where we relied on property owners to request their street to be done. And we would do small two-block segments of streets in the middle of sections. And we couldn't then complete those utility interconnections. We couldn't get the sewers put into the proper grade and depth because simply the connection points weren't there to do it. So that's been another significant change in how we've laid out and done the utility planning in order to try to make sure we can serve areas and have them be well-served when we get to the point of reconstruction, not that we're setting them up to have additional issues.
Thanks, guys.
I'm not sure if there was anything in particular that council wanted to talk about. I thought there would be really two things. I mean, every street that's in the 2022, there is, there's clearly a track record to demonstrate the need for it. Because of council's action at the previous workshop about moving it up to 20 million, I thought it might be beneficial to talk about projects that James and his staff feel might be moved up to as candidates for filling in that 20 million. Eventually, you know, staff, Mr. Van Gompoel and I, working with James and all the other departments, will make a series of recommendations for you. But I think it benefits you to hear some of those things. And you might, something may jump out at you after you hear everybody. I wouldn't suggest you make a decision after tonight, maybe James and Steve would, but I wouldn't recommend that because you got to hear from everybody. And then say, well, I've listened to all these things, and maybe Project A from Public Works and Project B from Parks. And, you know, and where you get up to that 20 million, you know, we had a tough time getting it down to where we were. To build it back up, I think, requires some thought. And I think it's appropriate for you to hear. Is it street projects? Is it equipment? And so, James, that's a hint, to make sure we talk about equipment too. We pushed a lot of equipment back. And I know sometimes there's a tendency to ask questions about the equipment that's in the plan. There is a lot of equipment that we pushed back because it was simply financial and not viable, not because the equipment wasn't needed. It was more like, what's the worst of the worst? And we'll fund that in '22. Now that we're backfilling, we're kind of going reverse order of what Russ and I did in the process. So, James, with that, unless there's some objection or you got some other thoughts?
I guess I just got to, I have a couple of quick questions. And I apologize, I'm not going to push for anything less than 20 million because I wasn't at the meeting that everybody agreed to, and that's tough beans for me. But how does the 20 million affect our debt ratios, Russ? Can you just briefly talk about that? I guess, myself as a local businessperson, taxpayer, and obviously council member, you know, we're the second worst out of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16 communities of roughly our size, scope, and scale. Well, I guess I'd argue that a little bit. There's a couple small ones on here, but...
I tried to get communities that had universities and campuses.
You know, I guess that number really jumps out at me, you know, that we're the second worst out of that many communities for, you know, debt ratios. I always like debt to equity, and I know it doesn't work that way for cities, but debt ratios as a whole. So can you just briefly talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, when we did it, we're at about 50, we'll be at about 50% of our debt limit with the new changes in valuation for 2021.
So that number goes from 61 to 50?
50-plus.
Okay, all right. And I guess I want everybody to maybe hear that again. We're going from 62% to 50% in a couple of years, so...
And I think that was the biggest debate at the last work session on why council said we have these infrastructure needs that are getting pushed back. And when we look at, you know, how bad our infrastructure is, that we thought it would be an appropriate time to make a little bit larger investment in infrastructure.
And I'm okay with that. I just want everybody to be aware at home of our debt. I call it debt to equity, but Russ has explained to me a million times that it doesn't work that way for municipalities. But so that number is pretty temporary. Transitory, maybe that's the word these days.
Every year, we need to look at it because it's a snapshot. And we, you know, we went through that exercise that I think everybody enjoyed going through. Let's change, let's add, make this assumption and that assumption. And if we don't pay attention to it, and then next year happens, and let's say the equalized value doesn't go up like we're projecting it to, we got to come back and revisit that and say, maybe we don't step on the accelerator as much as we did in 2022. 2022, we're looking at going to 20 million. Maybe we tap the brakes a little bit. Maybe it gets even better. Well, maybe we can try 20.5 million, whatever. Really, you need to visit that every single year. We can't predict exactly what's going to happen. The one thing I can predict is that the consistent number that we put in the model, that's the one thing you can count on not happening. It won't be the same every single year.
It's worth pointing out, too, that we specifically set the goal of getting to 50%, and we expected it to take a lot longer than it did.
And you're absolutely right, so...
This has been moving in the right direction for a while.
And I think part of Russ's point was that 50% was a great goal, but there's others who still outperform us on that. 60% was, once you see this, you see how unacceptable 60% was. 50% were a little more among the mortals. But there are others who are in, you know, 18 and 23%. It's enviable. I don't anticipate us going there yet, but we got to keep moving in that direction.
And I don't, Matt's on the long-range finance, right? We're down to Matt on the long-range finance. I wish he was here, but again, but I mean, I'd like to realign our goals so we can maybe, you know, get down there, keep some powder dry for the future. I don't see any reason why our new goal couldn't be, again, I don't want to speak for long-range finance, but I mean, I certainly think a new goal, you know, lower 40%, higher 30%, wouldn't be too bad. So, and I mean, I don't know, Russ, you probably have a better idea how long it would take us to get there, but...
Yeah, most of it's probably going to be based on valuation growth. Again, if you're looking at the sheet I handed out tonight, that's assuming a 2% growth. And we talked about, you know, 1% or 2% growth in the equalized value. This is assuming a 2% growth. And like Mark said, you know, if our value goes up 8%, that's good. That'll decrease our...
Leverage, yep.
Because it's all based on the equalized value. It's the equalized value without the tax increment districts.
Great. I'll shut up now because Matt's here, so...
That's all it took.
So, Mark, I don't know if you wanted us to touch a little bit on some of our projects that we would look at, you know, potentially moving around a little bit?
I think that might be a good exercise, James, in the limited time we have.
Okay, so one of the things, you know, is, you know, as we originally presented our wish list, if you will, to Mark and Russ, you know, which, you know, as they said, you know, they had to work on balancing it. So one of the projects that we actually pushed back in order to get to that number that we originally presented to you was Bradley Street project. Bradley Street out in the industrial park between Waukaut Avenue and 28th Avenue. You know, there's a big storm sewer culvert there that, you know, we did some Band-Aid work on them a few years ago, and ultimately, it's going to need to be replaced. Two years ago, we replaced the bridge, same creek, under Waukaut Avenue. This year, same creek under Oregon Street. Next year, Bradley was what we were originally targeting. In the balancing, you know, that got pushed back to 2023. But that would be one project, you know, a general fund, a general fund contribution to that project was around $600,000. So that would be certainly one project we would want to consider for moving back forward if there was some additional funding available for it. Some other things that we would certainly look at would be some of our ongoing projects, our concrete pavement repairs and our asphalt pavement repairs. Over the last couple of years, recognizing, you know, the budgetary constraints we were operating under, we trim back or cut out some of those projects on our own before submitting them to the city manager and the finance director. You know, again, for, you know, this current round, you know, we cut that funding on the concrete project for '22, '24, and '25. We left some in for '23, but you know what? Having to rebalance again, you know, it would likely be another casualty, I would think. You know, what we do with that funding is we use that to perform some fairly major repair work on Collector and Arterial Streets. Several years back, we ended up doing almost half the road of Keller Street from about the old LaSalle Clinic, I don't know what clinic that is now, but by the old railroad crossing, all the way around past Aldi up to 20th Avenue. You know, we originally thought we could do a few spot repairs in there. We started looking at it a little closer, realizing, oh, we got to take out half this road and redo it. You know, that's what this funding source is there for. Some other locations looking at it right now, I don't know if you've driven Keller Street from 9th Avenue south to about the driveway, you know, past Red Robin to about the driveway from the old Golden Corral. Every single one of those joints is about four inches of cold patch because the joints are crumbling. It was a very similar situation to what we had on Keller Street south, you know, past Aldi. So, you know, we're going to be looking at some fairly major repairs in that area as well. Washburn Street near the Sawyer Creek Bridge is going to need some work. South Park Avenue, as you come in really from 20th Avenue all the way to Knapp Street, there's a lot of areas that are going to need some significant work. So, you know, these are all projects that we would, you know, certainly be looking at some consideration for additional funding for. You know, Mark mentioned equipment, you know, in the Streets Division. You know, we start with our wish list, you know, expecting a couple of pieces of equipment to get pushed back. And, you know, there's, you know, we're almost caught up, but not quite caught up with, you know, kind of the pause we put on replacing equipment in Streets Division. kind of the pause we put on replacing equipment in Streets Division while we're working on constructing the garage and facility. So, you know, we're we're getting close, but, you know, there's still a few pieces of of equipment that Travis pulls his hair out trying to deal with. You know, we we'll talk a little bit more about some of those as we get into some of the individual meetings. And Travis brings in, you know, all of his maintenance and repair work. But, you know, there's a few of those trucks that, for whatever reason, just give them fits. Yes.
So along those lines, I see that Madison reached their goal of the largest electric vehicle fleet in Wisconsin by 2020. I guess the question is, with the prices coming down in the initial investment in some of these municipal vehicles, are we looking at, as we replace any of our vehicles, those electric or hybrid or biodiesel options for some of our?
It is a conversation we had when we had our initial meeting with Mark and Russ. Certainly to move to electric, there's a lot of other infrastructure additions that are going to be necessary. You know, but we we do evaluate those other alternatives, you know, as we're looking at it. You know, for eight, nine years now, we've been bidding diesel and CNG vehicles, you know, side by side every time we bid out vehicles. You know, the advancements in in diesel emissions technologies and the additional cost of the CNG vehicles and the additional maintenance and some of those other significant additional costs, it hasn't worked out on on some of the analyses yet, but we we've continued to bid those. And we did talk a lot about, you know, additional alternatives. I know, you know, as we were sitting here going over, you know, one of my managers was like, I'll I'll take an electric one of this or that. Well, we got to work out the details on and the specs on all of those things and, you know, let our Central Garage Division, you know, figure out how how they would have to, what they would have to learn to be able to take care of them as well. So we've got a little bit of learning to do on those, but we are continuing to evaluate those options.
Is it accurate kind of general statement to say that the maintenance costs and operating costs are significantly lower for electric?
I don't know that I would make that statement, but I I don't have enough knowledge to be able to say one way or another.
But we haven't bought the first one yet.
No. We don't have any infrastructure in place right now to be able to charge one either yet. So I think when we would look at getting the first one, we'd need to be making other building infrastructure additions as well to be able to take care of them and charge them.
I can tell you when we did the parking lot, didn't we put conduit in with the this parking lot for the possibility of that down the road? But that was it.
Yeah, there's some empty conduit in there. There's no wiring, no nothing else installed. And, you know, I think the thought process there was maybe like some community service officer vehicles perhaps ultimately going that route. So we did a little bit of forward planning, but, you know, obviously without knowing what all the needs are going to be to be able to charge those types of vehicles, we couldn't go any further than than that. So, you know, there'd still be a lot of infrastructure needs to be able to even get to that route.
A conduit's cheap and you don't have to dig up again, so that's why we do it.
Yeah, some of their, I guess, public works folks claim that in terms of fuel costs, the rule of thumb is the cost to charge an EV is about a quarter to one third the cost of gas. But again, having to add in the infrastructure kind of adds, obviously, to the initial outlay, so thank you.
You know, I think another project, you know, if you if you don't hear it from some of my counterparts, I'm going to throw it on the table right away. You know, that Red Arrow Park parking lot, you know, it's it's built on a landfill. We've been working on some analysis with AECOM to try to figure out what we need to do to rebuild that. And, you know, it's it's going to be an expensive project, similar to what the Riverside Park parking lot was because there was a lot of subsurface condition issues down there, too. So we're likely going to be looking at over excavation and placement of, you know, GeoGrid, course rock, more GeoGrid, you know, typical base course asphalt. So we're probably looking at about a two-foot thick where we got to completely excavate and then rebackfill with things. So we don't have any cost estimates put together yet for that project, but, you know, that that's certainly going to be a sizable project to undertake. And, you know, opportunities like this might present with, hey, we can move forward with something like that. Or, you know, we're probably going to be saving parking lot money for about three years in order to be doing the project the way we currently budget for the parking lots. So if Mr. Collins doesn't bring it up, you know, in a couple of weeks, I figured I'm going to put it on the table right away so you can understand, you know, why that one is, you know, if you drive through that parking lot, oh, you know it's in horrendous shape. But why it's not been put on the list so far is because there've been a lot of other, a lot more bang for the buck projects that we could get completed. So we've been doing that, knowing full well that we ultimately do need to do a large project to redo that parking lot because, you know, in talking with Parks Director Mauer, that those ballfields are very heavily used. So we need to do something, but it's just it's going to be a big project.
If you look at page 107 of the regular, the five-year CIP document, we allocated $500,000 a year for better for the last decade, and it certainly made a dent, but there was one year, or excuse me, several years where we had to allocate the entire allocation to Riverside Park, and that was about.
It took about three, three or four years worth of budgeting to construct that entire project. And it was constructed in two different phases because we needed to spend those first couple of allotments and and make some improvements before we could get to the rest of it.
But that's one of those.
Council members gotten a hard copy of that?
That was sent to you electronically before the first workshop, but if you'd like a hard copy, we can get you a hard copy.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
Probably good.
Earlier.
Okay.
That's what I thought we were. Does anybody else want hard copy for before the next meeting?
I'm good with this one.
Okay.
We'll make sure you get one.
All right, thanks.
But again, the half million, when you start setting aside an entire allocation for several years, every other parking lot project gets pushed back, and then you kind of create your own little backlog of smaller projects. And the next big one to bite off is is Red Arrow Park because it's so bad. And if you've had kids over there for baseball, you know exactly what I'm talking about.
I think everybody understands it's built on a dump, though. I mean, I I think their expectations are whatever we put in there is going to sink three years later. So, I mean, I I think people understand.
So this is to get rid of a couple of feet of landfill, right, James?
Yeah, we we, yeah, it would be a couple of feet of excavation and, you know, any solid waste that we encounter would be hauled most likely to, you know, Valley Trail in Berlin and re-landfilled. And and then, you know, engineered construction to to really help mitigate and avoid some of that settlement. You know, there's there's some big holes out there.
All right, that's obviously, I'm sure Mr. Collins will talk about it as well. Any other ones, James, you want to point out?
No, I I think those were the big ones from a, you know, a general fund tax levy standpoint. It was Bradley, it was asphalt and concrete. You know, certainly would take a look at another piece of equipment or two from a Streets Division. But like I said, I I would feel remiss if I didn't bring up the Red Arrow project as well because, you know, our our office works so closely with transportation on all of those parking lot projects that, you know, it it I just felt to be remiss not to bring it up tonight. And I'm sure Jim will bring it up again, but that's just the importance that I'd felt on it.
Anything with utilities that you want to point out, whether it's in 2022 or? Because moving up, it's all a function of the general fund, so Bradley you mentioned, and that has utility implication.
Yeah, there's a few utility implications, you know, Bradley Street not significant, certainly stormwater. There's a lot of work in getting the culvert and bridge replacement done, but water and sanitary sewer, not a significant impact there. You know, the sewer especially, you know, water, we, you know, do a little bit more work, but, you know, not a significant impact on on either of those two. So, you know, if we did want to look at moving that one up, I don't think it would have a significant impact on the utilities. You know, certainly with the, you know, the concrete and the asphalt, again, not a significant impact. And we might have to do some structure adjustments or rebuilds, but, you know, not a huge impact on the utilities on those projects either.
Was there any other questions?
Yeah, I turn it to council. If there are any projects in 2022, I don't want to just take those for granted, but there's Algoma just kind of takes the wind out of a big discussion, but.
Yeah. Well, Algoma's a big one, you know, and then we've got the, you know, the Bowen Street Interceptor project. You know, that's primarily a sewer-led project, you know, not a lot of other stuff. But it's, you know, several years ago, 2008, I think it was, we got that interceptor all the way up to, we came through the park in New York up to Bowen Street in 2008, and it was maybe four or five years later, up to Murdoch to take to decommission the pump station that used to be on the northeast corner of Bowen and Murdoch. This will continue extending that interceptor sewer further north to ultimately be able to decommission the pump station that is located at Anchorage Court area. And long term, that will continue to extend north. And we may not be able to completely eliminate the County A Northside Pump Station, but we may be able to convert it from a pump station just to a lift station and completely it completely eliminate several miles of old force main that we've had failures on. So that's continuing that project. East 9th, I I think everyone's familiar with that. East Lincoln is from Main Street to the railroad tracks. We've done some work in the area previously. Grand has been Grand, yeah, Grand has been done. There's one other, Mount Vernon got done as well. So this is kind of filling in that that gap and getting some of those utilities reconnected. We talked quite a bit about Rosalia earlier. The Vine Avenue reconstruction, you know, we need to get the storm sewer. We came through the easement that goes through the Axle Tech property, stopped at High Avenue. So we got to get that storm sewer over to Vine. And then, you know, realistically, we're completely excavating Vine Avenue to put the storm sewer in. So we might as well reconstruct the street instead of, you know, just doing a storm patch. And that helps Algoma drain, so those two are very much tied together.
Pratt Trail, I don't see on this list. Is that still sitting over in the parks budget?
It's not one that I've been kind of been requested to include in a budget somewhere.
That's in the parks.
So, yeah, I would presume that's in the parks.
Mr. Mowers in the back row, he's ready for two weeks from now to to talk that one up. Where is that, Ray, though? It's not in Parks General, is it?
It's in the parks CIP.
Okay. Just go to summary. Just hang on a second.
Are there other departments besides the parks that we put road reconstruction in other budgets aside from Public Works?
No, nobody else has roads.
The cemetery also has some paving work budgeted in that account as well.
Russ, what page was that?
Well, I was looking at the summary.
Yeah.
By funding source on page six.
Thank you.
Okay, not the public works.
Not the 10-year.
In the digital.
Yes.
All right, page six.
Yeah, on the funding, projects by funding source.
All right, I'm on page six, and I don't see it.
It's about.
Are you sure it's page six? I'm looking.
I don't think it's page six. Page six of the documents is.
Ah, on yours, it's page. It's on page 22, my bad. And it's about 80% of the way down. It's project 23, MPRDCON. And it's $500,000 right now in '23, and $500,000 in the year 2024.
It says nominee park road construct reconstruction as opposed to Pratt Trail, but that's the one.
Got it.
Yeah.
It's not public right-of-way road, that's why I'm not monitoring that one, and that's where it shows up where it does right now.
When you say it's not public right-of-way, what do you mean?
It's not public right-of-way, it's a part of the park property.
But it's a but it's a city street.
It's a park road through a park. It's not public right-of-way. It's not dedicated public right-of-way. It's a road that goes through the park.
A matter of semantics.
It it really is, but that's why it's not showing up right now in in the projects that I'm preparing and presenting to you because Public Works is managing the public right-of-way. Now, when it comes time to reconstruct it, yes, we're going to work with, you know, if it comes if it comes through this budget or a different budget, we're going to work with parks. We'll likely design it and likely bid it and manage the construction of it, just like we do the parking lots and a lot of other projects that are not in the public right-of-way because engineering and construction management is one of the things that my team does very well.
Yeah, we don't have the capability of, we don't have the engineering staff within traffic, Mr. Collins' division or Parks, Mr. Mowers' division, so they rely on Public Works to assist them in the the design and engineering of those things.
So if you're going to make them do most of the work, why is it not in their budget? I think is the question, at least that's.
I think it's a matter of they keep, they're responsible for keeping track of conditions in the park or the parking lot. So it's no different than the public museum. When the public museum needs their parking lot done, they call on they call on James and his staff to assist them.
Do other cities do that?
Lots of cities do it many, many different ways. Any scenario you develop, I can find you a city that does it that way. It it's really more of a comfort zone type of thing.
It's all over the place.
It's neither good nor bad. It just it just is what it is. But James works very closely. I mean, Jim Collins, you know, when when we hired Jim, Jim made a point, you know, I'm not an engineer. And that's okay, we have engineers and they can help you with these things. And Jim Jim keeps track of conditions and brings you guys in as appropriate.
Yeah, Jim, you know, for, you know, I mentioned the Red Arrow Park parking lot before. You know, Jim is the one who's been tasked with, you know, managing all of the municipally-owned parking lots, whether they're part of facilities like the parks or the museum or things like that, or, you know, whether they're actual, you know, public parking lots like 400 East and West. You know, and Jim manages the study that evaluates all of those conditions. And then in the background, you know, Jim and, you know, staff from Public Works and Engineering work with the consultant that does all the evaluations. We work with the consultants that are doing the environmental and the geotech. And at the end of the day, you know, our staff, our engineers and technicians do the design and the bidding and the construction management and observation.
Doesn't change the need for it.
Nope.
But it does affect the parks budget by by $500,000.
It it's all general fund CIP.
It's the CIP, and and Mr. Mowers is going to make sure that it's done to meet the needs of the park because it is operational impacts on the park. If we were to do that street, we'd have to make sure that everything done there. Mr. Mauer has to be part of that process to make sure that it's not going to interrupt with other aspects of of the park. So that's why it's there.
And how we would be able to stage construction because likely the road will have to be closed for construction. And, you know, we all know that's a one-way road through the park. You know, so there's there's a lot of significant impacts that, you know, only Mr. Mauer and his staff can help us work through.
So I assume, Meta Mayor, your concern is that by putting that in the parks budget, it's taking funds away from other things that could be in the parks budget. So I guess that we just want the city to reassure us that's not the case at some point, right?
The, let me, let me jump in and just try to help resolve this a little bit. I mean, we have multiple departments submitting requests for capital improvements, and we kind of evaluate needs across all departments. And whether it's in this department or that department, really up to the city council on what do you want to accomplish in this plan. And, you know, you kind of gave us the direction that we were working with $20 million of potential debt issuance. of potential debt issuance for twenty-twenty-two, and now it's up to you to kind of figure out, do you want this set of projects or this set of projects plus whatever? And it doesn't really, it doesn't really matter whether it's Parks or parking lots or Public Works, but.
The funding source is more important in that case than what department may be managing the project or not, because, you know, we're not having a single discussion about utilities with this, because utilities aren't the funding source. This is all general fund debt, and if you want Pratt Trail done, we can do Pratt Trail. It's fairly straightforward.
It is all in there, and you can go read it, public can go read it in the Parks budget. It's not like it's hidden or something.
I can tell you since.
But it, it's still five hundred thousand dollars that restricts what other things the Parks can do.
I don't view it that way.
If you're assuming they're automatically allotted that amount every year guaranteed, then that's the only way that that logic applies. In this case, it's just they're given an amount to, to fund X amount of projects, and that's what it is. If it's in his budget or her budget or another budget, it doesn't matter where it's budgeted.
Sort of like with, when James was talking about how he prioritizes projects, it's not just on the condition of the road, it's all the other factors. In this case, there are no other utilities there, so it is the condition of the road, but it's balancing out all those other things. It's not just, they're not just competing against street projects. They're competing against anything that's funded with that debt. So, twenty million, we'll make a recommendation on that. We're certainly giving some thought to moving it up. That's not James' call. That's Mr. Van Gompels and my call, that we're gonna ultimately recommend the twenty million, and that's absolutely on the list. But you need to wait for Mr. Maurer for that for next week. We only have a few minutes left before the meeting. Is there anything related to Mr. Robbie and Public Works? Because I want to make sure we, we cover those things.
Algoma Boulevard, is that, what happens if Algoma Boulevard is under twenty-twenty-three instead of twenty-twenty-two? Is, is there like a timing thing that's connected to other projects with that?
I would have to completely reshuffle our entire street reconstruction plan if you were to move Algoma and Vine out.
But that's why I was asking, is it connected to some specifics?
But it's eleven, it's an eleven million dollar piece of the puzzle, so what you would have to do is move out eleven million, move in plus or minus eleven million. But the problem that James is talking about is he's already got staff working on the design. They basically have to put that project in mothballs and then double up on staff time to get the other ones done, which he doesn't have. I mean, that's like, I think James is quietly saying, please don't switch him.
If you prefer, we don't.
Did your armpits get a little wet?
You know, it's, and, and, you know, just to be fair, you know, it's not eleven million of general fund, but it's an eleven million dollar project.
Yeah.
You know, that's everything, all-inclusive with all the utilities. But, yeah, you know, it, you know, to, to take a cornerstone project like that and move it would, you know, there'd be a, a lot of pre-planning work that we've been working on that, you know, we'd have to backtrack on. And would likely significantly irritate all the private utility companies that are also in that street that we're currently coordinating with, because then we'd throw another street at them that they haven't even started thinking about.
All right.
So, next meeting, we will, I think I might start with Parks next week, Madam Mayor. That way, we can get that one out of the way quickly. But all the other departments will be on next week's, or two weeks hence, our workshop at that point.
Thanks a lot, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This local government meeting is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at ashgashmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at ashgashmedia.org and Radio Simul.